I'd like to come to this meeting to consult with the council. Welcome everyone here to the seat. Would you please send our invitation and remain standing in our face for ladies and gentlemen.
Our God, we thank you for the beauty of this day, the glory of your hand and work, and the opportunity that we've had to enjoy it today. We thank you for these men and women that have given themselves to serve. And we ask to God that you would give us wisdom tonight for every debate and every issue we discuss, let us make those decisions to send the best interest of our communion. We thank you for this in your own name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everyone have your books time enough to review the minutes and the agenda, et cetera?
Yes.
Is there any additions, corrections that we need to make?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we add an addition to the agenda.
Okay.
And that is just to have a discussion about our fire department. I think that just got left off and we didn't get any officials for that.
Yep. Right down at where it says, "Mayor, pro temp, to Phillips."
Yep.
Discuss anything that you like.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, I'll do that.
Do you think it needs to be in the agenda?
I'd like it to be on the agenda, just to make sure we have, since it's such an important thing in here.
Okay. We have a motion to add discussion on fire departments on the agenda. Is there a motion that effect?
Oh, most, yes.
Is there a second?
House, I get it.
Okay. Madam, first, if you will, just put that, just put that, that's not going to be on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's going to be a separate item. Let's put it down where it says, "Non-agenda audience."
Okay. I have an additional request, just so we can have a discussion officially. I'd like to pull the financials out of the consent agenda, so I can ask a question about that officially.
Okay.
Not a big deal, just have a question, and then I wanted to do that, I felt like I got to pull them out.
Okay. Can we not do that as part of the discussion on consent agenda?
Okay, then I can leave them in.
Yeah.
All right. No changes, just a question, so.
Okay, we got a great thing. We're voting now on the motion to add, via the discussion, down on agenda, unagenda items, whatever it is.
Non-agenda.
Can we have a second?
This is on agenda items, yes, for tonight.
Under non-agenda items, we're going to have it on your table.
I'll second.
No more motion, a second discussion on motion. Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Sheriff, she is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. With that addition to the agenda, does everyone vote for it on the agenda?
Make a motion.
We have motions or second?
I'll second it.
Motion is second, any discussion on the motion?
That he votes for.
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Sheriff, she is. Okay. That may just enter the board, CEI.
Okay. Got them tallied up. Let me check my math, just to make sure. Three. Okay. Okay. Got them tallied up. Let me check my math, just to make sure. Three. Okay. Okay. Got them tallied up.
Okay. Does anyone want to look at the, or have a tally sheet? Okay. We have three firms, we have three firms that have submitted proposals, All Day Howell, Kent Smith Group, and the Three Knots Group. The All Day Howell, 320. Kent Smith, 293. And Three Knots Group, 325. And now the procedure is, we select one of these to negotiate with, and if we reach an agreement, that's it, and if we don't, we can go down to a new reaching agreement. Can we discuss them, can the board discuss them as a group here at your seat? Okay. All right. You weigh the pros and cons, and how you rank them. Is there anything, any of you, I'm sorry, I don't know how each of you votes, because All Day Howell is the tally sheet with the clerks and everything when we get through. Is there any discussion on how they are ranked, or anything about any one of the presentations? No?
No, I can say, all of them are pretty even to me. I put a few extra points on one of them, one specifically called out, that they would have an inspector here every day, although that wasn't called out in the others, and it's not a contractual requirement. All of those, they do that, they didn't specifically call it out. But other than that, I can just say personally, I looked at them, it's pretty good.
They were all, I thought, pretty good in content. I didn't necessarily like one of the presentations, but, okay. Okay, having no discussion on the grouping and on the rankings, we need a motion to approve or select one of these and begin negotiations with that person on price. Would you please, I've done this before, would you please talk to us about that selection and negotiation?
Yes, sir. Once y'all decide the most qualified applicant, then Lynn will engage with him, and then to the extent that I need to join that discussion on an actual contract, the two of us will work together to go forward and get terms that are agreeable to the town, and if I need to come back and update the town, in the process of that, if anything pops up that's out of order, or you raise a red flag, or is a dispute, or an issue, before we enter into it, I'll make y'all aware, let you have an opportunity to discuss and vote on it, and give me and Lynn directions to what y'all want us to do.
And that includes negotiations on price?
Yes, sir.
Everybody understand what Mr. Carter said to us? We will rank these, we will rank these on the order of high to low, and we will run to Mr. Carter and Ms. Gofford to negotiate anything that's missing, or closed, or not clear. And then they will negotiate price, if their price is greater than what our grant allows, and they pass them over, we'll have to go negotiate with, we don't have to come back each time. Y'all will go, one, two, three, if you reach it with one, I see it, you have to go through all three of them, okay? And they will run us back to a recommendation for the CEI. Do we all understand that? Is there a motion that Mr. Carter and Ms. Gofford begin ranking, or begin negotiating with three knowledge, All Day Howell and Kent Smith, and they will?
Can I make that motion?
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? How you voting, Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Okay. And you want to find the rankings? And make sure, well, when we get through to the end, we need to make sure that we thank each one of them for sending the, sometimes it's hard for small towns to get quotes and so on. Okay? And that will land us to pretty much.
Do we skip this consent agenda?
If we're not, we better, we better consent to it.
Yes.
Okay. So we're on the fire thing?
We walk, and this, you, you want to?
No, 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 no.
That's an, a financial.
I'm, I'll wait for my time. It's not an important thing, I mean, it's not something, obviously, we need to stay for. So I think that to start the discussion, we had a conversation last week, had a special workshop.
That's the word?
Not last week.
Not last week, a few weeks.
Several weeks ago. I'm old. Last week, you know, might as well have been 10 years ago. And so I'd like to, I'd like to start the conversation by making a motion that we allow, that we allow our lawyer to begin conversations with our county lawyer, to bring back to us some more discreet information, so that we will have something to actually make a decision for. This is not making a decision to move forward, but I feel like we need to give them the right to talk about this and have some more discreet conversations. And this is not making a recommendation that we make the move, but making a recommendation that we open up the opportunity for our lawyer, the lawyer from the county, and I forget, is it Fuquay?
Matt Fuquay.
Yeah. And Jeff, to have some more official, concrete conversations to bring back to the board. That's my motion. You made that one. I give a second.
Here, no second, the motion, I, I'll give a second. And we'll give you the order here to make another, and a few. While we're here, can we discuss this now, outside of it being a motion?
Yes, sir.
What kind of information are we asking our attorney? He's going to have to know what to negotiate, he's going to have to know what to ask Mr. Fuquay and things like that, so what are we, what are we looking for to go for, for the two attorneys? What was your thoughts on?
Sure. So my thoughts specifically were that we needed to talk about the disposition of real property, and both in any movement to the county or any movement from the county. And we're talking about the firehouse? Yes, firehouse and equipment associated with firefighting, that would probably require an inventory that you won't have at the present time. So that's the first thing. We'll need to discuss the reality of some loans that we have outstanding, and if any of those loans are attached to any grants or other obligations that require certain legal processing to take place. That's my first, that was my top three concerns about this. And of course, they won't be able to discuss the relationship issues, and I'm just asking them to discuss some real property issues. So that's really, that's a big, those three things are big, but that was my three elements.
Well, I may have to respond to that, that's all right, Mayor. Generally, how these things happen is Matt and I talk, or me and another city attorney or county attorney, we just, we've got an open flow of information at all times. You don't have to make a motion for me to talk to them, I can engage in that, so that's easy enough.
Thank you.
I've already been in touch with Matt, I'm glad that Jeff Massey's here with us tonight from the county, always good to see you, Jeff. Lynn had reached out to me a few days ago about this issue, and asked me to get in touch with Matt. I had. He said we would talk about it, start, we got to figure out what y'all want to do in the county, what the county wants to do. We're just here to facilitate, obviously. Matt has been at UAB, he's had some health issues, he's had a significant surgery this week, he's recovering from it, he's now at home in Marianna doing very well, but that's going to delay us a few days, maybe another week or so, if we figure out what we're actually talking about. But from my perspective, I would just need a directive, does the town want to try to, let the fire department go to the county? You know, from Matt's perspective and Jeff's perspective, does the county want to take it on and take it over? And once the two bodies have figured that out, we'll figure out how to do it. Matt knows how to do it, the county would initiate it, is what he told me, and I'll be here to help him and do all the things necessary from the legal side on the town's behalf, if that's what the town decides to vote to do, to make that happen, and if the county decides to vote to do it, and we'll work together.
Okay. I think the follow-up on that, then, you know, my question would be, I guess, of the council, is what do you need, what we need, to decide that? If we don't have it tonight, then how do we, because one of the things that we had in that discussion was, the conversation was, in order to decide, we need to know more about that, right? And so I don't know how we, you know, car, horse, chicken, egg?
There's a lot of unanswered questions out there, and I'll tell you, first, I'd love to be able to say, I don't know when I don't, because it's dangerous if you don't, right?
Yeah, and I will find out.
But from your perspective, as a council tonight, or any other meeting when you decide to, my advice would be to debate, discuss, and decide if that's something y'all want to do, as a fundamental idea, not that you're going to do it, because we have to have the county's agreement and involvement, obviously, but that would be a vote I would advise you taking, if that's something that y'all decide you want to do, the town to turn the fire department over. Is that a, we'll engage beyond that.
Now, but is that a final decision? We still have an opportunity.
You could look at it like the effect of a resolution as opposed to an ordinance, right?
Okay.
An ordinance is a law. A resolution is a decision by the board that signifies something.
Okay.
As a good way to look at it.
That's their thing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Wright, you don't ask anything, say anything at this point?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Moore?
I thought that we had the, it would prove to have the meeting before it had with the county. I think this board needed to talk about itself first.
Yes, sir.
Two meetings ago, I think it was, Mr. Phillips brought up a suggestion, and the next meeting, we had people here committed to do something, and that did not mean to vote for.
Oh, okay.
And any commissioner, any commissioner can invite anybody to come if they have an issue, so I'm not saying, but I would, I think rather.
I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, probably need to make clear that I didn't invite anybody to come, so.
Oh, I.
Just wanted to make sure from that point of the conversation.
And I apologize if I didn't ask enough questions to Lynn when we were discussing, and she, I think she was doing her job, and I didn't explore it deeper, I thought it was something that maybe was processed.
And it could have been, it could have been the chief, I don't know who invited the county down. Mr. Massey, who invited you to come?
What's that, sir?
Who invited you and the?
Justin Barron said that he was going to come to the meeting, our fire chief.
Okay.
He's on vacation, and he called me, he said, "Would you please just go and sit in?" And I says, "I'll be glad to."
I'm talking about the one, the first meeting that y'all came, thank you?
Yes.
Who invited, who invited?
For the first meeting?
Yes, who invited the county to come down then?
That was through, that was through our fire chief.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
They just asked me to be here, and of course, I'm glad to come anytime.
You're talking about Justin?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Of course, we get your.
I didn't know he was going to, until I got here and I saw him, I had no clue.
So, okay.
I was curious, just halfway back, when I, how did that come, how did this all?
That's what I'm asking, how does all of a sudden somebody show up, and they're ready to discuss takeover, and they weren't invited?
Well, I just want to clarify, make sure we use the right word here, it's never been anybody's idea of takeover.
Why are you a little worried?
I just want to make sure we use the right word, that, Mr. Mayor, I think maybe other people that are sitting at this podium have had conversations with Justin as well, about what that looks like. So I don't think that his, his attending that meeting that night was any, was that much out of, you know, ordinary. I didn't invite him, but I'm glad he was here, and I'm glad we got to have some conversations on it. But I just want to make sure that the county has been very clear, that they don't want to move forward until we say so.
Yeah.
But that's been my impression of Justin, I have never had a conversation.
I can speak on that just for a moment, and I'll get out of your head.
Yeah.
Our concern, this is for the town of Wausau, no matter what you want to do with your fire departments, there's no, there's no takeover theory or nothing like that. It came to us that you may be interested in doing that, we're here as a resource to talk about it, that's the only thing. We have no plan. We were asked the questions, what did this look like when we had 501(c)(3)'s came under the county, and what did that include? And I think you guys are headed down the exact path you need to go. You need to find out everything you can find out about it, make sure it's the best decision for the town. Jeff, Jeff can gather all that for you and tell you just what's going on, and if you don't agree with it, we're still going to be your partner anyway, and come and help and do everything we can to make, to do what we can to aid Wausau in any way we can. We collaborate already in the fire system with the volunteers and for the citizens, so, and that's what it's all about at the end of the day, is for them, is, the other stuff is busy work to me, as long as we're getting the fires tended to and our guys are staying safe. So that's, that's all.
Okay. And for its terminology, what do we say, takeover, assume the duties of, or any other phrase? It all means the same, somebody's going to step aside, somebody else is going to step in. Takeover for the president, the guy key, takeover for the officer that resigned. Takeover is not a forceful connotation, it should not have a forceful connotation to it, meaning.
Absolutely. Agreed.
If I use the word takeover, that's, that's, that's common language in Wausau. And what I'm thinking, I'll read the minutes again, and you said that every other department that have done this had, had.
Not every department. We've had, you know, Sunny Hills has always been deemed as the county fire department. It falls under county procurement policies and such, okay? But now, Orange Hill, Greenhead, and Five Points are part of the county fire system. And so we divert our resources, you know, and combine them and move on from there. We hear, we hear that Ebro's interested in talking with us and everything. It just seems like fire is, I will say this, I think the fire system in this county has done real well for what they've had to work with, but those days are gone, because our county's growing, and if we don't meet the needs of the growth, we're going to be in a heck of a situation one day, and I think it's catching up with some of the volunteer departments, and that's why they're reaching out to us, because at the end of the day, alls we want is to have the residents of this county with good dependable fire service, just like we do EMS and sheriff. And so to me, they're all three out there together, and.
And I don't think there's any we and they and this and them and this at all. You're right, we're all going to be partners, whatever happens down the road someplace or tonight or whenever. I don't think the partnership and the assistance with the departments interlocal agreements or mutual aid agreements, none of that's going to change, I know that.
I don't think so.
But the departments, which departments did give you their land and buildings?
I'm sorry?
Which departments did give you their land and buildings?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Which departments gave you their land and buildings?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Which departments gave you that?
The ones that came under the county. If you come underneath the county for various reasons, for insurance, for real property and everything else, the assets have to be the county's. If they're not the county's, then there's really nothing for us to do, except continue to support where we can.
And certainly, many miles of water is crossed over under the bridge, but that's already been done to some of the departments, and the land already belonged to the county, so they didn't, they didn't.
On some of it.
Didn't give any land.
Yes, on two of them, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, any of the cities may have owned their land, but those other, those other departments didn't, didn't give up.
As you're pondering this, you might want to think about, let me give you just a tad bit of insight on where we think we're going with the county fire departments. For years, because our volunteers do the best they can, but they work for a living.
Sure.
By the time they get to the station.
Sure.
From work, if they can leave, by the time they get their gear and their truck and get out there, what we're actually doing is putting, putting out burnt down structures. For the first time in history, we're beginning to, we just had one, is out, you just had one? Down, down the south end of the county, we had another one in Vernon. We're actually saving homes now, and the reason we're doing that, because for the first time in history, last year, the county invested in three full-time firefighters paid. So we have people with our SAFER grant, and those are firefighters who work at other departments in different counties. On their days off, they come here and work during the day and partner with the full-timers. So during the day, if something happens, we're responding immediately, until, until the volunteers can come in and get there, and then we work together as a team with the volunteers. My personal goal is to see us, if we can, it's going to be a tough budget year, but to fund three more paid firefighters in this county. We need it, because the activity that we're seeing now, all the way from the sheriff's department with these people coming down our highways and the stuff they're, you know, they're having, happen with them, and then just the house and structure fires. And we're entering, here we are with all this fuel in the woods from Michael still, and we're scared to death that we're going to get a drought, and somebody's going to burn leaves in their yard when wind's blowing, and we end up with a bad situation. So we know to keep up with the changing Washington County, we have to change with it, or else we'll die on the vine. And so we're trying to have that vision about this. It's very expensive, and it's hard to get to in a single blow, but we're taking baby steps to do that, and I think it's going to benefit all the citizens of the county when we're done, or adding certainly more paid firefighters, if we can afford to do that, and respond during the day, whether it's a car accident, whether it's a structure fire, whether it's a brush fire. Getting there quickly is important. And I'm not knocking the volunteers, because they're, they're the integral part and have been the backbone of this whole county for years, and still are, but we still have responsibility to respond the best way we can, and by adding people during the day, at 12 o'clock at night, if there's a call, we're going to have a guy in a truck, and we're going to be headed that way. If it's 12 o'clock in the day, we're going to have a guy in the truck headed that way. We figured, we've gotten to the point in the county, that that's our responsibility to try to make that happen, so, but it won't work with straight firefighters, about paid firefighters. The volunteers are integral.
Liam. So there's some reports out there, but you probably have more volunteer violence.
Absolutely.
And that's anything.
Yeah.
Career service.
Yeah. We're just trying to upper game to meet the needs of the county, basically, and so with that being said, I think you guys are doing an excellent job of looking at this, because between Jeff and, he can get any of your questions answered, and I certainly wouldn't do anything, I wouldn't recommend you doing anything, until every person on this council is happy with it. Because regardless, you know Roger Dale, if you pick up the phone, call me, I'm coming.
I do know that.
So that's, that's not going to change.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to let you do your business. They let me have a day off tomorrow, and I'm going to stop, I'm going to.
Thank you. Appreciate you showing up, and you tell Justin you showed up.
I'm going to make sure.
You tell.
I'm not going to call him on vacation, but I'll wait until he gets back, so.
The same question I asked Mr. Barron when he came early in the year, so that all of you know, I suspect I intend to meet with Mr. Massey, the two of us, probably in his office sometime.
Yes.
Just like I did with Mr. Barron. And as far as Mr. Barron being here last month, I don't know that I said particularly to come to that meeting, but I've invited him to come to any of our meetings. I consider Wausau part of the Washington County Fire System.
That's right.
If we start getting names and all, whether it's takeover or acquisition or whatever, that's what it is about, I don't want you to leave here thinking that there is a Washington County Fire System and then there's a Wausau Fire System. We are part of that system.
We're always part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Always.
So I don't want us to think that there's things out there that by us changing, we're going to get a whole lot more stuff or some things like that. There are some opportunities for us to coordinate better and to, and some things like that, but we are, we are part of the county, and the county has a responsibility to this, because we pay taxes down here, so if they can use tax money to fund the fire department, some of it's going to be spent on those and so on like that. And the SAFER grant, how long is it good for?
Originally, four years, I think we're three, maybe a little better, a little better than one year in it. So we've got three more years, which SAFER pays for those guys, off-duty guys, to come in here and work during the days, on their days off, has been very beneficial, because those are all good trained guys, firefighter twos.
But like, but like many grants, it could go away with the economy as perpendant.
Well, the purpose of the SAFER grant was this, is take that four years and prepare yourself to have a fire department that can function on its own without the SAFER grant, which means we have to fund that. And that's why when you see us making these moves, we're not going to have the SAFER grant forever. The first time we had a SAFER grant, that didn't happen, and we were very fortunate to get another one, and this time we're going to do it right. So at the end of this SAFER grant, we should be in a position to have enough firefighters on staff to keep us going, along with our volunteers.
Much like the manpower ranch used to be in the 70s, 80s, and into the 90s, we'll pay you to, we'll pay yours office staff, or your operator, or gun truck driver, in this case, fireman, and then the next year, we'll pay them a little bit less, and next year, and then on fourth year, fifth year, whatever it is, you had to pick it up. So you've got to be preparing right now to pick up in three years all these.
You've got to start working.
And if we have a budget like we have been prone to have in Washington County over the years, you're not going to be able to pick those many up, those many ladies.
We got to go to work. We've got to go to work.
Yep.
And we've got to do the right things. By the way, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to get, what are those hearing aids that Joe naves advertised as MD hearing or something like that? I've got to get me one of those. I finally figured out that I think I have a problem with my hearing, so I apologize. I don't mean to sound like a dummy out here.
I want that card he's got for that thing, the grocer store and buy my groceries.
So anyway.
And the question probably goes to set the stage a little bit more, he's got a better understanding now, if not an accusation or complaint or anything, would that have you or Jill or Justin or anyone else to visit with us at any time?
We're going to do everything we can to do what you guys want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
And you don't have to leave.
Well.
And they should have to.
Like I said, I'm starting my vacation and I've got to go check on my daughter, she's in FSU.
Yeah.
And I was hearing about that today.
Have you heard from her?
So that's kind of been on my mind.
Have you heard from her today?
I did, I did. And the thing about it is, she told me on the phone, she has class tonight, exactly where that shooting was. In a couple more hours, she'd have been there, but I'm so proud of her because she, May 2nd, she graduates with her masters.
All right. I can remember it was in the shooting.
And somebody else paid for it and that's the best thing about the whole thing.
That place right there is probably the safest place in the United States tonight though.
Oh yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. So guys, any point I can be of help, hey, let me tell you, you've got the cats now for attorney now, you know that. It's good to see you, Jeff.
Good to see you.
All right, we'll see you.
Be safe. Okay, with his input, is there anything else you need to tell us or do we? Well, this is a bit longer. Well, what we need to do is never leave here with confusion or bruised feelings and those kinds of things. That's what this is about, was for debate and things like that.
No, that's, I appreciate that comment. Well, I don't have anything else I need. I mean, if y'all want to debate it while we're on the topic, that's fine. If you want to take a vote, you don't have to. I'm already, I can already engage with Mr. Fuquay and Jeff, just, you know, it's official, but not taking any action. Just to gather information and continue the discussion if y'all want me to.
Yes. I think, I think.
We knew.
Okay. That's my opinion.
Okay. You don't, Lynn had already directed me to do that and now we're having a discussion. You don't even have to have a vote on it, I always continue to gather information.
And questions that we have, you want us to channel through Lynn, that'd be better than all of us trying to reach you or.
Either Lynn or yourself. Just maybe one of you or two of you. But I think you've talked to everybody.
I know. Over the years, you've told us that, others have said anybody can call me, but we know you have to keep, you have to ring the bell sometimes, so if just one person's going to be that and or two, Lynn and I or his vice mayor.
No, I live in New York in Clarkton. Lynn's real thorough about, I'm sure that I'm aware of what's going on. I know that we do. Okay. She's doing a good job. I'll do whatever y'all want to do.
Just as we're close to the accident that you were no, a film on things I'm concerned about is that our minutes reflected that we were told that all the other places gave land and everything to the county.
I remember and that wasn't the case.
That was not the case.
Yes, sir.
They already owned the county, so they didn't have it given to them. And it was bought by state grant money and actually one of them bought by recreation grant funds and we've come close to maybe having to pay that back. Two of us with FDRP, FAP, something like that.
Yes, sir.
First of all, so if we got this far, the county may not know they're consolidating now. They may come to a place they consolidate and they got three stations and that piece property they would loan to somebody else. And that piece property could become surplus and it could be bought by somebody outside the city.
That's true.
So as you negotiate, it's not for me to just keep on talking. As we negotiate, as you, Mr. Fuquay, one of my top interests and I think Mr. Phillips mentioned it a while ago, his interest was in properties as well, what happens and how does it happen? If we decide that we want to join in that deeper, in that deeper relationship with them, that they can have and operate and get some kind of lease or some kind of management agreement, something like that, that we would retain ownership and.
That was Liam's question.
We would get out of it. That's been one of my, back of the mind concerns since we started this conversation.
Is the sense of the council that you want to turn the dirt over, the real property over along, potentially if this were to happen, or you want to keep the real property?
Keep the real property and, yeah. But whatever kind of management agreement they would need to run their business out of there and they would be allowed to do additions and any of those kinds of things. But they stay with the property if that, if that agreement, lease ever had to be backed away from them.
I think we can absolutely do it that way and treat it like any commercial lease. Well, not even, I mean, there's some other rules that apply in municipal and county setting, but retaining ownership, I understand is an important, I'm guessing is an important thing to the council, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got you. Have you met Jill?
Aaron.
Yes, sir. He's very qualified. Is he the fire chief of the county? He's the county.
You're referring to Justin?
I'm sorry.
Justin, okay. I haven't, I haven't called him Jill the last time I called.
Well, you've got two J's here tonight. We've got questions.
I had a question, I don't even know if it's possible. Is there a way, if you were to say, yes, the county can do it, but the county said the only way we'll do it is take the land, is there, you were going to answer this, so again, is there a way to put a stipulation in that for any reason, it would be, the property was to be used for something other than a fire department? That it's.
Reverted.
Reverted back to the city.
Self-protection.
That cannot happen. That they decide, we're just going to put a warehouse there. Well, no, you no longer, and we all own the land and it's not a fire department.
Is it destruction?
Isn't there a way you can do that?
Yes, sir. Real straightforward, is it destruction, whatever legal.
Yeah, I'm just trying to help you out.
Whatever options they're willing to go down, but I'd agree with that.
And I wouldn't want to see it go anything other than a fire department and I know what little we've talked about it, they say that's one of the greatest places in the county for one because it's so centrally located to the man by.
Y'all are right smack in the middle and it's really beneficial side.
We are a premier, so maybe concentrate it all, maybe it's more.
Creature Road, Creature Road is the geographic center of the county.
Okay, and that's about a mile, mile in height.
Not far.
Not far at all.
Okay. Do we, we'll stay on that or?
No, I just want to clarify some summaries are made. So you might, if it matters to you, but I'm not, it's okay if it doesn't, that, because I know you're just trying to carry out the will of the council, but we did have a.
Meeting advised, I mean, what?
No, 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 you're invaluable to us. It's been invaluable already in my experience. We did have a meeting which, that we had recorded, but I think we only have an audio on that.
Okay.
And which I had laid out some of the more detailed reasons for me asking us to consider this.
Is that what I see reflected in these other minutes from the past, one of the past two meetings or workshops?
Is that, is that a workshop?
Yeah. Quite a lengthy summary.
Yeah.
And they're documented. I think they're accurate too.
Yeah, and so, you know, just to kind of state that there actually are benefits to us moving, but currently we don't have the infrastructure to obtain grants. The county can't help us with grants in the way we currently administer our fire department. And so there are lots of advantages.
From a livelihood perspective.
To moving, yeah. There's financial, of course, but that financial is taken up by the fact that the county gives us, helps us offset that cost, well, 100% offset that cost, but I just want to make sure that we correctly communicate that there are advantages, that this isn't a zero-sum game. You know, we currently don't have the infrastructure to obtain grants, we just simply don't have it. We don't do the reports, we don't do the inspections, we don't, we don't have the infrastructure to obtain grants. So we can't grow financially, we can't get new equipment. And so I think that that's one of the major advantages of being able to utilize the large infrastructure of the county to give us some upside on grants. But we don't need to discuss anymore.
And again, again, not further to be to speak between your council persons, but I don't know that we can't give those grants, the fire department will be able to, we've got a grant person on staff, we can do some things there and some of those things, we don't know those things only because the county has written grants for other entities, cities and even some private entities. We have had that by the county's grants department, so and that can, that may have all been changed, somebody may have given you new information and somebody may have given you wrong information or I might not know what I'm talking about.
I think a thorough investigation would prove, would more support my statement, but I'm glad to let that, because you're right, neither one of us have the facts in front of us.
And there are things to support.
And when we say that, we ought to be able to obtain.
Sure. And just to follow Mayor's comment, I mean, there are some things that really small towns can get that don't apply to counties or bigger cities, bigger municipalities. Don't, I don't know about that the fire department setting specifically, especially volunteer fire departments, but there are some programs that lend themselves better to a town like Wausau that the county can exploit. So we just need to figure out what the benefits are, which y'all want to do, counties wanting to do it, and I'll bring y'all the information I can give on it.
And the offerings that want to go away, so we don't have to have it next week.
Oh, they're going to work with.
I'd rather it be thorough and when I read it, I don't even have a question than to have it back in a hurry.
And like you said, it's perfect, I mean, you're already partners either way, one way or the other, so I don't see it as a win or a lose either way, you're going to be fine. We just got to explore the benefits and see how y'all feel about it.
Okay. Is there anything to bring anything now?
Under the clerk tab, you have the grant updates for the town for all of the grants. The MO106, which is the well two, the plans are the 100%, they're at Fred Fox's office and he has to add some documents to them and send them to Florida Commerce for approval. Once we get Florida Commerce's approval, we should be good to get ready to start construction on that. That's also for the Second Avenue, those are at Fred's office as well. On the Coral Lane, they, Florida Commerce approached us about doing an extension for that and that extension has been requested. We're in the very last stages of getting the extension, what I heard on the conference call this week. We, I've got the concurrent notice and the release of funds and it should go on the website. Did she send that to you, Paul?
It's already on.
Okay, it's on the website. So that's just one of the steps we have to go through to try to be able, the release of funds and stuff like that is to go ahead and let the money start flowing. So you have to let it sit out there for 15 days or 12, 15 days. The coronavirus project, we're still waiting on the amendment to come back and that was to change it from to demolition to a new building. So we're still waiting on Florida Commerce on that one. The Jackson and Jefferson, now that we've opened a CEI, what happened now is that Jonathan will take the contractor's bids and he's going to take that and the CEI firm and go help negotiate a price with them and then go to DOT. We know we're not going to have enough money for the project. There's already been some little, you know, preliminary talks to see if we can get it funded for what we need. So he's waiting, he was waiting on us to make the decision tonight so he can see what the CEI cost is going to be, so he can go to DOT all at one time.
If I can ask you, this was from last month, right? This was, you'd already given us these.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was, thank you.
The Possum Palace, this is the recreation grant and you'll see, a boundary survey needs to be ordered as part of the commencement package, which is due April 29th. The, I did a couple of preliminary costs to see what it was, there's no money in the grant for that and we're looking at minimum $7,500, it looks like.
Do we not have to do a survey and phase one?
We have to have a pre-survey and then we'll have to have a post-survey at the end of the grant.
Would I not, would not our post-survey from the last grant serve as a pre-survey?
And it has to be within three years now. You have to have the thing within three years if there's any. We, I have sent, Margaret told me just to send the old one that we've had for a while and see if they'll accept it because there's been no changes.
That's what I'm saying.
So we stuck it in there, but it clearly said, if you don't have that, you have to send quotes for what it's going to cost to get it. They're wanting a three-year survey now, we don't have anything within close to three years. So if that, if they won't back off of that, it's a $50,000 grant, that's going to be about $7,500, Fred Fox's fee is going to be about $7,500. We have to hire an engineer for this project, although it's a recreation grant. And so also the grant was written for new playground equipment, the picnic pavilion, baseball field, the basketball courts. Fred said it included fencing and some upgrades to the bathroom, that they cut the fencing and the upgrades to the bathroom out. So we're going to go back to them and see if they will consider taking the baseball field renovations off and possibly the picnic pavilion because the fencing is what we need the most. The fencing has just been tore up down there. So we're going to go back to them and see if they'll negotiate with us. And so, but we've sent the commencement package in, it got to me yesterday and I sent it up today. So we'll see what they say about the boundary survey.
Getting close to about 40%, 40% of the grant already gone.
Really that, that phase one, that was, that was not a FERDAP grant, it was a legislative regulation.
You're talking about for the Possum Palace?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is for just the parks.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't know. This is, this is for the little kids park area, the baseball fields.
The survey's going to be for the whole property, it's not just.
Whole piece of property.
So.
Yeah, we don't have anything within three years. Fred went back and looked at all his stuff, I looked at what we had in here, we haven't got anything done in three years and it clearly says.
Red, red flims, over three years now.
There was no boundary survey in there for it.
Oh.
Margaret said she had sent in this boundary survey from like that Leonard Henson did and that she's sent that in every time and we've kind of got by with it. So we've sent it in again, we're going to see if we'll get lucky one more time.
How long was that survey?
30 years.
Office of security. I thought it was through the Mr. Hanson's.
Yeah, I don't think he's alive. It's very old, but she said that they've gotten that a few times, we've stuck it in there, we're going to see what happens. We'll see. Florida Commerce people.
Absolutely.
This is FERDAP, so it may be, Florida Commerce, we would never get by with it, but FERDAP may be a little bit easier to deal with, so we'll see.
The reason I asked is Mark, that had come up years ago, not long after I started here and it just occurred to me that was that same survey.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to stick it back in there and see what happens.
And we know it may change because we, that, those people, we had that odd shaving and everything, we need something to.
That's right.
To transfer that piece of property.
That's right, we do do that.
That's right. I suspect we can get a survey.
Yep, probably so. The Rogers Square, the Town Park improvements, I advertised that for grant management and engineering. The project number that was on the grant when I took over was not correct. And so when I sent this stuff up to Florida Commerce to look at it, they were like, you advertised with the wrong project. And so they sent me the right project and I've had to re-advertise that, so.
So the stuff we put on the website would be incorrect as well?
Yeah, that's why I sent you a new one.
Oh, we've already done that, yeah.
Yeah, we've already done it, yeah. I didn't check it, that one slammed on me. I, well, what I thought it was. So we re-advertised, we have to let it sit there for 12 days, I think it is, so we'll be ready by the next meeting to move on that one. The budget status I gave to each of you and it's holding pretty steady, it looks like. These are just the color-coded thing, okay? And then I decided to put a little thing under there, what this month's actual income and expenses were just for y'all, because this one's based on the whole year. The water operator, as soon as, I sent the letter to Mr. Henshaw, as the council had instructed me to, as soon as he got the letter, he came in on a Monday and turned in his resignation as the water operator. As an emergency thing, I called the city of Vernon, they're sending somebody up to help us until we can decide tonight who we want to select and they're willing to help us until the end of the month. So we're going to pay him on a daily rate of $100 so that he can be, we'll have a water operator on site.
He's a very good response.
Yep, I did advertise for the water operator position, I got two things, two proposals. The one for US Water came in at $1,930.77. Castleberry Environmental came in at sixteen hundred dollars, and those are the only two I got.
Can I ask you, clerk, did both of those meet the reporting requirements, first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't mind trying to negotiate.
We've got two proposals and we've got hired them, what we?
We were paying Mr. Risher seventeen hundred.
Seventeen.
No, seventeen. But those are the only two that I received.
We wanted to get a hundred dollars a month, more than, uh, less than one hundred million, three hundred dollars, more than, two hundred dollars. And of course, Castleberry for all.
I think it's Maryanna.
Yeah.
Apparently, U S Water will do, will collect daily, and Castleberry will make three non-consecutive visits per year, so I'm assuming they're, would have us do inflection?
Now, each, each of them are going to collect the samples for, so basically, the water operator has to go to the water plant three days a week, they have to write down the water usage three days a week, they also collect all of the samples, we have to do, um, I don't know many daily samples, but we have to do monthly, quarterly, and yearly samples.
Okay, so, so them just saying daily, that's just their general statement, doesn't necessarily what?
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep. And then they'll prepare the report, at the end of every month, report has to go to D E P and Water Management, each, each of them will repair, will prepare that, and then I get a copy of that as well.
So both of them will transport our samples?
Yes.
And U S Water says they do?
Yes.
And our, our neighboring cities, they all have staff people. I wonder would one of them, do we, how much on the ramp piece of being here, does it require?
Just three days a week.
All day?
Oh, no, they're here about five minutes.
Yeah, I'm wondering, could maybe Chip Lee or Vernon, who can share the cost of one, and he can loan it to their city, or they can hit their personnel policies, their retirement plan, or something like that, but I wonder would they like to recapture half of that person's salary and share them with us?
I don't know.
It didn't work, it didn't work, I like it. Is a hundred dollars a day currently just for the times he comes, or we're paying a hundred dollars no matter what?
He, no, we're paying a hundred no matter what. He comes and does, he's there about five minutes, he checks the plant, and writes down the water, but you have to have the licensed operator.
But he comes daily to do that?
Three days a week.
Okay.
And it can't be consecutive days, so right now, they're on Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
So I want to make sure, but we still pay him for Tuesday?
No, we're only paying three days.
We're only paying him all the days.
Yes, three days.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So in the month, that's?
Yes.
Fifteen hundred, we're getting close to.
Now, when they collect the samples, they do take the samples to Panama City to the water spigot, and they don't charge us extra for that, it's just part of the, part of the job.
We charge for that, man?
We pay for the samples, we don't pay for the travel time down there and back. We just pay, the samples are seventy-five dollars every time they sample. Anyway, Mr. Risher, we pay that.
Mr. Risher was doing that transport, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Well, Mr. Mayor, would you prefer that we delay making a decision and see if we can work that out? I mean, we have, we have arrangements made, but we're.
I, I don't think the guy that's doing it is willing to do it past the end of the month.
Okay.
He's just helping us out.
Could you start us early, it's Monday, you're trying to talk to Chip Lee and Vernon?
Sure.
See if they would like to, or would they, uh, we, we can do that interloper, or some kind of thing like that.
Yes, sir.
Interloper or mutually, mutually, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. If I had an employee and somebody would pay half of his salary, and he's not over an hour, three times a week, I'd be glad to do that. So we're paying, paying him for all day, five days and three hours, that's good for him. Mr. Park, what's your thing?
I'm glad to share.
I think that's a good idea.
I do think, uh, we have to consider that, we'll, we'll just have to re, reorganize our collective, reorganize our coverage for the next month.
That's something you can manage.
Maybe. I'll call one of these two and see if they want to do it.
Mr. Risher, he'll charge, he'll charge.
He won't do anything, I can tell you. He won't.
Think you should tell him, I'll try.
Okay, so you want to call Chip Lee or Vernon, and surround the areas, and see if any of them should enter into some kind of agreement, and their employees would do our water sampling, and be our licensed operator.
Be our licensed operator.
Okay.
Okay. What all would it entail for us to send Philip the school to do that?
Well, he has to serve for a year, believe me, I've been checking on, for a year under a licensed operator. Other operators have told me that if he's here doing the water full-time, they can sign off on it, Mr. Risher never really wanted to do that, he wasn't willing to do that. So I think if we get an operator, and, because Philip does basically all the work now, he's doing the well, other than collecting the samples, I think he can go and take the test, and he's willing to do it, if we can get the licensed operator to sign off on it, so.
That's another good idea, I think, if we could add an amount to his salary perhaps, that we will save here.
He's very willing to do it.
And have our own person who's willing to do it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Do they offer an apprenticeship, so that we could start now?
Only if he, like, physically works within.
Okay.
You know, forty hours a week, I guess, is what it is.
You're going to have for a year?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yeah.
Is it like, I mean, with an adult child, I think that's a good idea.
Do they call it a two thou, is it like a two thousand hour thing, or they say for a year, what's the months?
Mr. Risher said, says for a year.
Okay. I would just be interested.
For one year.
Statute actually says hours, because that can be a difficult thing.
Yeah.
Because he wouldn't be able to capture the full amount of hours, hours and twelve months.
Yeah, it says for one year.
Okay.
I'm always looking at that, because he's willing to do it.
Okay, that's, that's two options we've got, if you could follow up with the, your contacts about signing off on Philip and seeing, make sure that he's on board with it. I like having our own. Okay?
The resolution twenty twenty-five oh two, we're not going to be able to do that tonight, that pertains to, there, this recreation grant we were talking about is only reimbursable money, so we'll have to go to the bank and get a fifty thousand dollar loan, then as we spend the money, FERDAP will reimburse us. So the bank, to be able to do that, needs a resolution, but she did not have it ready for tonight, and there's still some fin, I had to send her some more financial stuff, and, but we'll, we'll come back to that hopefully next month, so.
Can we wait a moment?
Yep.
I was thinking, both of us have to sign, so you could.
She, she didn't have the money figure, she's thinking they'll give us the prime rate plus one percent, but she didn't have that solid, and so we couldn't do the resolution, resolution without the solid money of what we're signing. The fan quotes, Mrs. Carter had asked me about getting fan prices, and those are also under the clerk tab, they're very expensive, as you see. I did go down to the Possum Palace, and there are seven of this, this county line, the ones that look like this, these black fans, there are seven of those down there now. The Development Club bought two last year, and there were already, there's five down there now, so there's already seven of those at the Possum Palace right now. I don't know if y'all want to purchase more, or, I mean, you can see they're pretty high-dollar.
Yeah, and, and the, the other one, that one, the installation behind it, I wouldn't even consider that, if those, if those six footers already aren't new, and three footers.
Yeah.
It's not going to do it.
I got, and as you'll see, I got something to hang down from the ceiling, or.
I think, see, the one she was referring to, with that first one.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, they're very expensive.
I would, I would say, and I, and I know we hate using that term, but you're almost going to need an engineer to tell us how far down from the ceiling you need to put it.
Right.
To make it, the efficiency that they're standing it will be at, right?
Right.
And not too high, not too low, so, uh, I think if, if you need to be careful.
If you had that on page two, as an oscillator, that would, and you've got to have, what you said is right, you've got to have it, you've got to know where the efficiency level is, uh, but that's, that's direction maybe it's going to go to the north, to the south.
Three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars to give them. Hang her up.
Yep. And the one that Mr. Phillips is talking about, so, until, until nine, it's one two hundred dollars.
I'm still, I'm not hoping we'll get the appropriation.
That's crazy.
There's a sentence.
Which will include the fans.
I see, of course, of course, probably just ain't good, so, you know, I think you're going to need, the widest you can get, and, and probably need to be already to push them in. And it's going to be quiet.
These were the cheapest ones, Kim and I both, like, online to look at the different ones, these were about the cheapest one we could find, so I got those for her. And that's all I had.
The water rates, or the water collection, they're still in, most, most of their shit that we're used to being favored.
Yep. We did finally get ahold of someone from Dollar General, and the issue seemed to be, when they applied for water here, they gave us a Jefferson Street address, which is what they put on the, um, planning and building development plan, it was Jefferson Street. Okay, after they got the store opened, they got an address of Washington Street, so they're at, they're technically calling themselves three, four, nine, four, Washington Street. As we've sent the bills based on the Jefferson Street address, which is what they came, I guess they threw in the trash.
I don't know. And don't be surprised if that changes, because the driveway is on Buster Rogers.
Buster Rogers.
You're supposed to address the driveway.
Yep.
Or the entrance to the property, and that right there, supposed to address the entrance to the property.
So when we finally got ahold of someone, they're like, well, we want to dispute the bills, and it was like, okay, well, what's the dispute? We don't have any stores on Jefferson Street. So now we, we changed their addresses to Washington Street, we've sent them back, we seem to see a little movement, I don't have a check in our hand yet, but we seem to see a little movement on it, so we're, I think once we get the money coming, it's going to be good.
Turn, turn the, reach to the dispute, and we'll turn the water back on, or.
That's right. We'll take the dispute, by the way.
Kim basically called the corporate offices and looked, refused to turn the water off to the, to the store. So that has a little action going.
Well.
And then we found out that that, their, their, nobody called and told us they didn't think that was an address, they just, I guess, threw them in the trash, I don't know what they did with them, that we changed the address now to three, four, nine, four.
I think they're sixty day paid, too.
Yeah.
Be aware, because we've done some work for them in the past.
So I'm hoping.
Even once they do agree.
By next month.
But every, every thirty days, you got another check.
Yeah, I'm hoping by next month, we will have this caught up, where I have to go cut the water off, I feel real bad doing that.
Okay, and that's all you have?
That's all I have.
But just before we move on down to the members of, I want to commend you, clerk, for the way that she is now preparing the report, we probably would leave the table tonight, and we're worried about our grants, what's going on, and all of that, that we haven't long, long time, uh, and we probably could have had it all the time, we didn't ask one before all the time, and you went in and said, what about Jefferson or Jackson? She would tell you, but this, every month when we leave here, we know everything's happened in the previous month, I like that, I like that budget report out there, and I look up there, and the income is always more than the expense, I like it even better. So just, we're committing on the reports that you're giving to the council now. Okay, Mr. Park, you have the rights to stand, do you?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything.
You don't have anything.
All the questions have been answered.
Good.
Right, and.
So, um, well, one of the things you already answered about the Dollar General water bill, my other thing is, is not this Monday, but the past Monday, Waste Management didn't pick up the garbage, they got out of the truck, took a bag, bag out of the top, and then left the rest of it, because it was loose. Now, ever since we've had Waste Management, that's never been an issue, you know, I mean, we bag our garbage, of course, coming out of, you know, from inside the house, but there's times where extra stuff gets thrown in there, and I had no idea that they wouldn't pick it up, that's the first time they've ever done that. So when you do the newsletter again, can you?
Yes.
Address that and let everybody know, so that everybody's on the same page?
Yeah.
Because apparently, if you put, whenever I called, that's what Kim told me, she said, well, if you had loose trash in there, that's why, she said they're getting picky about it.
Not us, Waste Management.
Waste Management, I guess.
I don't think they do mine.
They will.
I'll clean out my vehicle, throw a string in the can, I've never had a problem with them pulling mine, that's why I was like.
Yeah, I didn't either. They'll only pick up the household.
I'm sure he was lit, what was the problem?
Uh, no.
Opened or not?
It was open.
Okay.
Be sure to let two of them connect that.
Well, I mean, it was, you know, it's like the bag was in it, and it was pushed to, and they just took the bag out and looked in the can, I guess, and seen all the loose stuff in there.
Well, I've had loose stuff in my can, and they're always.
I can tell you.
I cleaned my car out, put it right side of it, and just throw it up out of the bag.
It's probably. It's not, it's not the loose garbage, is that he, he's in here almost every week telling us that he passed by somebody's house, because he's only allowed to pick up household garbage. House, he won't pick up limbs, he won't pick up sticks, he won't pick up, we had somebody that put a little bit of concrete in there, he wouldn't pick theirs up, um, he won't pick up, if it's bottles or something, that when he goes to flip it, they all fly out, he'll immediately put the can down and drive off. Now, he'll pick up limbs and sticks if you bag it, because he don't see it, but he won't pick up limbs and sticks if you just throw it in the can. We have, almost every week, he comes here and tells us he won't, that, well.
That was probably some of what it was, but my thing is, is it's never been a problem before.
Right.
You know, and then last week, it was.
Yeah.
Even like, like, cuttings, flat trimming and all that, yeah.
Yeah, if you bag them, where he don't see them, he'll pick them up, but if he sees them, he, his, his, he's had the policy to easily drop the can back down and just drive off.
We had like, um, PVC pipe that was, you know, broken, snuck in there, and, yeah.
He left it, he was true to his word. Yeah, he, I mean, he's in here almost every week on Monday telling us, and he'll tell us specifically which ones he did pick up and get us to call him, and tell him, you didn't pick it up, because you had household garbage in there.
And I think.
I didn't get a call.
Or you didn't have household garbage.
I think when, in our case, there was good things, that, that seems, that would be something, a better, also, a better, a better call, and the base, I know that they picked up stuff that's not bad, and that.
Like I said, they always have.
That's okay, mine, look, there were three weeks, we don't, we're not a big throat wing.
We got lots of trash in my house.
Um, we, we, Kim, I forgot to tell you, so Kim has also started us a Facebook page, it's called Town of Wausau F L, which we thought might be a, a quick way to throw things up there, that would just, like, announcements, we were thinking specifically about when the water's going to be shut off, we're using the E O C system, did you get one the other day? Oh, no, you're not, it wasn't.
What's it have?
We're using the alert, it's Town of Wausau F L.
Okay, that's a good idea.
We're using the alert system, but this might be a quicker way, once you'd be able to click right on there, pay your water bill, um, and stuff like that, we're going to put the newsletter up there, which we'll also put it in the, on the website and that kind And stuff like that. We're going to put the newsletter up there, which we'll also put it in the, on the website and that kind of stuff. But this is just a quick and easy way to try and, we're going to put the Development Club Fun Day stuff out and quick and easy stuff.
Can I make one quick comment on that? I've seen other business managers do it. I love it. It's a great idea. There's a way in there, I understand, you can turn off the public's access to make comments.
We didn't.
Okay. So you want to make sure you do.
No, we did that.
For your own, for your own sake, if you did.
No, we did that.
I figured you did.
Geology and heritage of council, crawling to question.
Yeah, I'm glad you know that.
It'll also tell people when the dumpsters are coming, because we get a lot of calls about the dumpsters when they, and then they forget and then they call back again. Next one's June 23rd through 27th.
Did we get it this spring already?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was asleep that week.
Yeah, we did.
How long that gone?
We said the 27th, the 23rd through the 27th of it?
Yep, be back again.
Okay.
And that, that's all I have.
Is that burning the handle?
No, that's all I have.
Which Phillips, you can.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up, the answer may be already here because Lynn, I'm looking at that admin recreation and it's eating in $10 a month. Have you already closed that or do we?
No, if we get a recreation grant, it goes in that, that fund.
But in the next three months, it's going to be empty and are they going to go to the negative then and start charging us 10?
No, I'll have to take money out of the general fund and put it in there. We got something from the bank that says that they're going to look at accounts like that and possibly take away the charges. But we haven't gotten anything saying that they are yet or not.
Just good question. Why does that one date February to me? Is that just a mistake or?
Oh, I missed that one.
I guess it were. I mean, I, I'd love to, I'd love to see if we could be aggressive there because we're about to go in the hole.
Okay, I'll check on it. Let me see.
That'd be tamperous to, to show our invention or, or language.
Yeah, I don't know what that looks like for us, but. We can't open it like when it comes back again?
Yeah, we can open it.
I'm just curious what our options are. I mean, again, I know $10 doesn't seem like a lot, but.
Yeah.
Seems like a lot.
Well, and I think when we had, you know, when we had the recreation, they would fund it with ball sign-ups and stuff like that, but.
And I'm sure there's a minimum balance because our, our, our others getting the 10, well, you can't tell, right?
I think that's the only one that gets a, a charge.
Under a minimum balance, yeah.
Is it candy planted in recreation?
Not here, because we didn't have anything. Are they sending us money? We didn't have anything.
Tell them we need some money for our bank account fees.
From what I understood from Margaret, if we have people sign up, they would send us a set amount of fee for each of the kids that we have. Is that not right?
I thought they made an allocation to all of the cities, but you're probably right. I think mostly it probably came at the end of the year and it was sort of having to be turned in.
Yeah, I think it's based on the number of kids you have signed up.
For the longest time, people got it the way us did. And people had to sign up, like, and they had to pay, the parents had to pay so much. And we didn't care where they come from. Every kid that came, we was on plate. If they had a dollar, they didn't have a dime. And then they changed and, and I think you're right, they, they need to do for, after the seasons over, they're producing surge. We need to do something like sure, dinner, like barbecue or something, you know, and get the $10 back in there.
Well, thank you for letting me talk. That's that question.
See? Anybody in the, are, are you waiting to see those? We've been sitting here all evening. Are you waiting?
No. I'm a three-knot shirt, the engineering.
Ray Rollins.
Yes, Ray Rollins. I was just waiting so I could thank you at half for it, as long as.
Okay. You want to address this in any way now or?
Well, I can just.
You've waited this long?
Well, just thank you for the opportunity and I'll be in touch with Ms. Lynn about, and I'll get her with our CEI team leader and we'll get negotiations going.
Three months?
Three months, yes, sir. I appreciate that.
I, my, no, the standard term. Uh, oh.
No, sir, not me. I was pointing out to Wild.
Oh, she told me not to say 10 moves.
We're talking about. I know, that's not fair.
Do you have anything more, Mr. Trump?
No, somewhere other than. Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody have anything, Mr. Trump? We've been recording for a month since we get to see it.
Yes.
All right, all right. Yeah, we will stand the term.